First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
Second.
Remove the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion passes. Next item is a consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Remove the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name, motion passes. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak to something not on the agenda? Next, special report or presentations, easily tech here. CM. Full business, trash bid. So, as the council requested, the bids went back out, solicited more bids, we got one more bidder, which I believe is in the council package, correct, Amber? They were higher than the original bid, so auto sanitation or green environment is back here again. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to this agenda? You guys want to address the council any further than they already have?
I appreciate you having us back and just answering your questions you have, or, you know, we gave you three different, three different options on years five, seven, and ten. Also, the options on recycling, so.
I did, one question that came up was, are you guys expecting a full approval tonight, or like a contingent approval on further negotiations and final contract? What are, what are you guys seeking?
Well, I mean, based off of, you know, our, our RFP, you know, response, we would like to get a full approval tonight, and then we would give you the contract to review, and really, that's it.
We, we actually need approval as quickly as possible to be able to order the equipment. So, I mean, there's the carts and all the stuff that go with it, and you get all the stuff planned out, it's a, at least a three-month project, so it's not a order today that'll be here tomorrow. So, that's, that's the main thing, I mean, a sense of urgency on, on getting the equipment and getting everything set up.
We'd like to have everything in place and, and rolling by, you know, February first, which is the new contract start date, so.
So, RFP, did we request specific lengths?
I would have to defer to length.
You asked for five, seven, ten, nine, ten, or?
Yeah, I think we left that open.
Wide open.
Yeah, so you could have a little idea of it, which, which they did.
Right.
The current one is a five-year contract, which was an extension of a previous five-year contract, but there was no restriction on, on the length.
Another council, questions or comments for green environmental?
No, I guess I, I appreciate the different term lengths, and I think I understand a little bit why. You know, is there any interest in doing a shorter term than five, say three, with different rates?
No, I mean, it would, it would be higher because we try to spread the cost out of, of, of that equipment out, so the longer we spread it out, the, the cheaper, you know, we can, we can do it, so. And banks, banks generally, when you borrow money, they, they didn't, they, they like to have those assets guaranteed that they're put to work for a certain period of time, right? To pay, pay that stuff off.
So, and the reason, the reason there's not a lot of price difference is because when I did the numbers, I actually depreciated those over ten years. So, that's where, that's, if I would have done it five years, you know, made the five-year carry the whole thing, it would have been a bigger, the higher five, five year would have been a lot higher, but I spread the equipment, the containers out, because they have, actually, the containers have a warranty on them, you know, a ten-year warranty, so.
Yeah, I think the last time you presented, there was some discussion, I don't know if it was an offer, but there was some discussion around that second container, getting closer to five dollars.
We did, we, we, we agreed to drop that to fi- to five dollars, and that, and that is, I don't know if I put it in the contract, but we'll, we'll fix it to where it is. Yeah.
Do you know if that was an offer or just a potential negotiation?
Well, well, the mayor locked the door on me in the conference room last week and wouldn't let me leave, wouldn't let me leave until, until I agreed to that.
I just want to make, clarify that.
He made it very clear it was on video, so it was, it was binding, so.
And the reason that was higher was because we were trying, based on RFP, we were trying to incentivize recycling and instead of incentivize garbage, so.
Yeah, I think you made a good point about what'll happen if I second bin versus recycling, it's probably true, but that's a decision that the citizens get to make themselves, right? So, I get it, so. Guess that was my only concern, is getting back to that.
So then, only, I guess, if the council chooses to move forward, their decision tonight is whether to use, do this recycling.
Make, make a motion, you know, to accept, accept our bid, and then also, also, you know, vote on which option on recycling you guys want to do, because there's, there's two options there. So, the term, the term length and, and the recycling, and then make a motion to accept that once, once you decide.
Any other council questions?
All right, thank you, guys.
Yep. So, you'll, I guess, I'll leave the contract with you, once you make, if you guys decide.
Yeah, though, the council will do their discussion now, and then they'll either make a motion or not make a motion.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nobody else that'd like to comment to this item, we'll close the public comment section. Another council discussion.
So, we got one other bid, it came in higher, and then it looks like this WM is requesting another thirty to sixty days to complete the request, to see if they can come in with a bid. How many people total did we reach out to?
We, we sent it out to five different companies. One came back and said they couldn't at this time.
Okay.
Another one, and I sent, I just, Casey, I don't know if you just got that email I just sent?
Yeah.
The, the group that we received the other bid from, he sent me an email today that he had looked on the website and saw what Green had proposed as well, and they said that unfortunately, due to operating costs and the travel time, we currently cannot compete with their bid, so. And that's for the honey creek that we have down.
What were the, the two recycle options?
A la carte for each citizen, or what, five dollars for everybody? Is that what it was, or somewhere around there?
Yeah, on a second, on a second cart, additional, additional carts.
No, for the recycling.
It's like, is it twelve dollars a person if you, if you choose not to, if we don't do everybody?
Yes.
And then it's five if we do.
I think it's three ninety-five.
It's three ninety-five.
Three ninety-five.
Yeah.
And that's once a month?
Yeah.
My concern with that.
Big bucket.
My concern with that is, is that once your recycling starts piles up, you're going to be prone to throw out the trash, then you're going to overstretch.
That's what he was making about.
Yeah, but instead of a little cart, a little bang, you're going to get a ninety, ninety-five.
Yeah, so it's actually six times better than the bins that they have now.
I understand that, but the bins are overflowing now, and we're allowed to stack next to them, whereas this scenario, we no longer be able to, and the loom have to shut. So, it's not quite that simple.
They, they. They can get a second cart for three ninety-five.
Then you got four carts outside your house.
That's better than the stuff that got piled up in front of your houses now.
I personally think, just for cost-wise, for citizens, to keep it, if they want to do recycling, they can do recycling and not force everybody to have a second cart. Because I think there's going to be a lot of families that want to spend that extra five bucks on a second cart. And then the ones that do recycle will actually recycle, because I think that if we force it on everybody and they get a recycled cart, it's going to become another trash cart.
Yeah.
You know, once it gets dumped in their trucks, it's going to be negated at that point anyways, because the recycling center probably makes up.
Forget everybody choice, other than the choice about the rates going up.
Yeah. So, what is the impact on that? Final, if we didn't decide, recycling is optional.
Sixteen ninety-nine, just for the first cart, five mil after the second.
We pay what now? We pay twelve.
Twelve ninety-nine, so it's.
For customers, it's, we have a three twenty-five dollar markup for admin costs, I think on top of that.
On top of the twelve something we do, so right now it's fifteen something for everybody.
Fourteen twenty-five, I think.
Would that admin cost still roll over with the new contract?
That's really you guys' call.
Something I love to talk about in budget finance and bring something back, because it sounds like we have some control.
Yeah.
For a piece of it, and then figure out what to minimize the impact, raise something back.
That's where I'm at, minimizing impact.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll be a trigger we can pull at any time between now and that third or a day.
Right.
New rates.
Have a conversation about what it's used for, with that going away, you know, what kind of budget impact will that have? Bring it back for final approval.
I mean, this is what a, what a option is.
Well.
We're just talking about the admin fee that we're tacking on right now.
The city tacks on a three-dollar inflection admin fee on top of whatever a contract prices.
Or is they even not doing that?
Yes, we'd like to look at that, I don't know the impact, but let's, let's go say what happened, what, what would happen if we just removed that? What, what cost is that supporting, and where would we get that money?
We're just going to have levers.
Yeah, some options and see if we can.
Well, if we hypothetically, if we could remove that impact, then really.
It'd be, yeah, so.
Really go down.
Hmm. Be about the same, wouldn't it?
Well, if I go for it, three twenty-five added on to the twelve dollars, fifteen twenty-five, so it's rounding to seventeen.
Was it twelve, was it eleven ninety-nine? Twelve dollars, it's a twelve ninety-nine for the current.
For, sorry, we're looking up to see, I, I think it's, I don't do bills as much anymore, so I think it's fifteen twenty-five that we get billed for currently.
Includes the three twenty-five.
Yeah.
So.
So, I'm saying that if we could remove that through twenty-five, then.
But then with sixteen ninety-nine.
Without the add-on, so that doesn't include the big bulk pickup, correct? How much was that? Do you want to add the big bulk pickup?
Five thirty-four.
Five thirty-four.
What if you didn't have that, but you called and said, "I'm willing to pay for one stop"? Can you do that? No, you're either on or you're off.
Yeah, I mean, we're driving, we're driving every one of those streets anyway, I mean, that's where our car, you know, our car is, so. And again, I, recycling's one, one thing, but I would not encourage to, to go, do away with the bulk, because.
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
If you do away with the bulk, that trash is going to end up somewhere, it's going to end up in your, in your business dumpsters, on your county roads. They gotta, they gotta have somewhere to deal with it, or they'll find somewhere to deal with it.
So, with the bulk, sixteen ninety-nine, I'm just going to say seventeen, and then the bulk adds five bucks.
Five thirty-four.
Five thirty-four. So, we're at twenty-two thirty-four.
And as of now, the bulk's, up till now, has been included in whatever we pay, so it's, in a way, bulk is, I assume it's rolled into the old cost of the contract, bulk has been included, it has not been optional. I wonder how many people would choose not to have bulk, and how much large trash would they have in commercial dumpsters?
A lot.
I mean, you know, think about that, yeah.
Is there an option to do four times a year, citywide penalty, or is there another way to kind of address that issue?
Yeah.
The big problem we have with that also is people not able to get out there.
People on trucks, people on trailers.
So, they call us often and ask for the city to come pick their stuff up.
Got you, good point. They would take care of it, some, but we don't know how much. Worth of it, I don't know what it costs us to do that.
I'll speak for myself, I would feel a lot better if, if the bulk were somehow able to be rolled in to the mandatory first portion of it. Because I think you're going to have a problem if it's not. I think it's already.
I guess I assumed that would automatically be the one, the bulk.
Well, then we need to talk like we're automatically doing the bulk thing, so it's not fifteen, it's twenty.
That's right, yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, so then you're functionally having a seven dollar increase, you mandate the bulk.
If you, and you remove the three dollars.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
It's once a month bulk, right?
Yes.
Once a month bulk?
Yes, that's correct.
You know how much we were already doing, actual bulk pickup.
They were just taking it.
I know, but we don't know.
Right.
Solve them on a problem, I don't know if it's a problem, or we're preventing a problem, I don't know if it will become a problem.
I don't think we had enough to see if it was a problem.
Right.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
I don't know how many couches and microwaves and TVs I've thrown away.
Yeah, same, it's a little lot.
Well, thank you.
And Baker cleanup, I mean, those college students move out, there's a lot of, I've been around.
Isn't it special, are they called residential? You know?
That's all the commercial.
That'd be, they wouldn't have, they weren't rolling out.
Cars. Well, you got all the rental properties, though.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
So, whenever they move out, you're going to be couches.
So, we're talking fifteen, twenty-five to?
Sorry, it's fifteen forty.
Fifteen forty.
Essentially twenty-five.
Without the second card.
Yeah, that's good, you bare minimum no recycling, you one bulk pickup.
What was the pricing?
Fifteen forty to twenty-five.
Now, all the control we have is the three dollars.
Yeah, would be twenty-five. Twenty-two thirty. If it's just the bulk.
I'm saying with the three dollars and twenty-something cents.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So. So, twenty-two, if we, so, about that admin fee, what is done with that admin fee? Is it kind of like the franchise fee, where it's just a super cost that has to do with working with the company? What is the?
No, there's a, there's a trash franchise as well, but that is, or, I guess, billing portion of it, I really don't know originally why.
Sure, that's what we need to dig into.
We need to see. Yeah.
I think tonight was just to decide on the contract.
So, term, five years, is everybody thinking that?
Yeah.
Longer.
Try to get further ahead of it.
Is there a negotiation here at all? Because I don't want to vote and give them all, really, and then lose all of our negotiating ability.
It didn't sound like it.
Yeah.
We've got the bid. I'm going to get back on with Casey, I don't know.
I think they were just wanting us to approve it or not, and then they were going to do the contract.
Well, the contract's just terms and conditions, it's not pricing. Correct me up wrong, but the bid's the bid, right? You're, other than the five dollars that you committed to.
We can see on the second card, yeah, I mean, look, they, they posted our stuff.
Can you step up to the?
No, no, I, I just.
Sorry, I mean, so on the negotiation, we gave the five dollars on the cart, it's, I mean, stuff is just more expensive. And, and you posted our numbers on the internet for the other people to see, and you still got higher bids? I mean, our numbers are good numbers, we left a hundred thousand something dollars on the table. So, honestly, I mean, that is a really good competitive bid, I spread the stuff out over ten years, and we put our best numbers forward. So, I, honestly, I mean, there's not a lot to give, it's, that's what things are right now.
I get it, we got to answer the five dollars.
I understand, I understand, I'm just telling you from our perspective, you know, yeah, I think those numbers are, are good numbers, and, and we'll do a good job, I mean, we didn't.
Let me ask you this, if we accept the bid, do you need to know five, seven, or ten tonight? Maybe it'll be a minimum of five, but, I mean, because I, I would like to kind of look at the price differential and see if ten makes sense, based on the pricing.
I understand, I understand, there's, there's really not a problem with that.
Right, so it'd be.
Be accepting the bid.
Accepting the bid.
They have finance.
We would just come back with the.
Yeah, we just need to know what, what, you know, what, what you want to recycle.
Yeah, all that would be decided, but the term, I think, is what we would like to have.
And, and I'm fine with that, but we, we need to know pretty quick, because it is a very time-sensitive for us to.
Well, either way, you'll know tonight.
It'll be a minimum of five.
It'll be a minimum of five tonight.
But we may come back saying, can we do the seven instead, or can we do the ten instead, based on what you propose?
They just want the option to be able to move up from the five, from base five, to seven or ten.
On the final contract that we signed.
Okay.
Yeah.
They want to go through the no.
And we're, we're meeting on Friday, that we can discuss it then, and come back to you.
You good with that, Sean? Yeah, so what, you'll have a decision on Friday?
Well, they're going to make a decision tonight on the second bid.
But on the turn, on the term, you'll make a decision.
Year, just the annual term, the seven or ten.
Yeah.
Is, will be decided at the next council.
Sure.
The final.
Yeah, two weeks.
It'll be in two weeks, okay.
But you're going to know either way, you got, that should hold you guys up.
Yeah, yeah, we can't, we don't need to order anything until we got a signed contract, whether it's a five, seven, or ten. That's, that's just.
Even if it's approved?
Even if it's approved.
Okay.
I, I, and Glenn, I mean, it's, it's really, I mean, because you could change your mind. So, it's, I've seen it happen, I've just, I've been doing this thirty-four years, it's really.
I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's just really, I mean, our, our bank, I mean, it's seven hundred thousand dollars, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it is what it is, I, I'm being honest with you.
Amber, can you pull up their bid? I just want to see the difference of the five, seven, and ten.
Eight thirty or something, right?
It is forty-three. A little bit.
So, this is the five years.
Basically, there's a, on just a base, once per week, ninety-six gallon cart, five years, it's three hundred and six thousand for the city. Right, seven year, it's three hundred and one thousand, about a five thousand dollar savings, so it goes from sixteen ninety-nine to sixteen seventy-three.
So, say, so you're talking a dollar, these is the dollar versus?
That's from the five to seven.
Yeah, I went from to the ten, two ninety-six, so then basically another five thousand drops to.
What's the sixteen forty-seventh's low?
Yeah.
So, we're talking forty-two cents difference in five.
It's really, it's like interest rates, right? Do you try to lock it in?
Yeah, I know.
You know? Oh, yeah, that's the thing.
If you do it at five, you renegotiate.
So, basically, the way, I mean, it's.
More than likely it's going up.
It's pretty close to flat, there's not a huge savings from five to ten.
Besides, they do have a variation in there that allows you to know how.
On, on, yeah, on annual, on, you know, an- annually, it's fuel, like, uh, fuel disposal and, you know, recycling and cost of inflation, you know? So, all those, all those factors are considered.
It could go down, so it's in there to go up or down.
Yeah, fuel fluctuates up or down, I mean, CPI could be down, I, I don't think it'll, I don't think it'd be down, but.
So, it's based on CPI and/or on actuals on fuel pricing?
Fuel, yeah, everything's, everything's actual, everything, everything, it's not a number we just pulled, pulled up, so. And it's, and it's, it's in the contract, right? So, our fuel language is very specific, if it goes up, you know, fifty cents, the surcharge goes up two percent, if it goes down fifty cents, it goes down two percent. So, it, it goes up, up or down, either way.
That's just it annually, based on the previous twelve months.
Just, just, just annually, because it'd be a nightmare trying to, you know, change the price once a month, or quarterly, or whatever.
The, I calculated, I don't know if I sent this to Glenn, but I, I calculated, I think, the interest rate difference from four percent where we were five years ago to now, it was, it was three dollars, or two or three dollars a home, just in the interest rate, nothing, nothing else. It's amazing, but I was just seeing what was impacting the pricing on the stuff. Two thirty, thirty, or something.
How many, how many, how many stops are there? How many household stops? Just a number.
About fifteen hundred, yeah, fifteen hundred, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Go through that. Figure we just pulled up, go through it now.
Yeah, no, I think it was.
The only thing I'm torn on is fact.
Yeah, I'm just thinking through that because if they've got. Obviously, we didn't have adjustments in the previous contract, right? And if they've got CPI and fuel, other adjustments, then. We're gonna end up, or we end up in five years, and if we put this out again, we're gonna be paying. That market price again, right? It's not like we stick here.
Not like now.
It's not like now.
Yeah.
It's not such a huge hit.
It's gonna be, it's not like we can lock this in for ten years. That's why I, you know, again, in five years, they're doing a great job. They come back with, you know, similar grade pricing. It's moving much beyond where we're already at with them. Based on the adjustments that they had to make.
You know, and it sounds based on what we're told.
Well, I don't know, I guess we'd have to understand all those adjustments. I don't think that that's part of what, you know, we can pass on.
But if you just do a five-year contract.
Right.
And then they come back with a new contract.
Right.
Doesn't mean it can be.
Essentially, here you get a lock in your base. In ten years or five years, base goes up and you still have those adjustments.
I mean, it's, it's a contract, but it's very variable, so it's kind of having a hard time with the word contract. We don't have any variability. We can't decide if we want to cut the years down or anything, or. What are you locked into? You're locked into variance. I'm, I, I kind of want to err toward five, and maybe I'm completely wrong, but I'm just gonna stream consciousness real quick. It sounds like the whole industry's going towards automation, and there's a lot of capital expenditure right now on that upgrade. And I just wonder if that same stress on these other competitive companies is gonna be there in five years, if, if, maybe it's not. Maybe once everyone's automated, you might see more competition. That's a little way down the line, but.
Yeah, I was, I was leaning towards ten, thinking locking in the rate, but, you know, with it being. I negates that, so now I'm leaning more towards five. I would, if we're caught between five and ten, why don't we go with seven? I would, I would think that it's gonna be a variable no matter who you go with. Or whether you go with them now or you go with them later.
I would assume after twenty twenty, all companies.
Because.
I think it's a good compromise. Seven. People split between ten and five, seven maybe.
I'm not split between ten and five.
I think I would seven.
No interest. No interest in waiting thirty days for these guys.
I think they wanted you to do a year, like, do a year.
At least a year.
With them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we explored shorter term, and I understand why they don't want to do that. And we went through the process.
I know, twice.
They're a big company. If other companies can get together a bid and that amount of time.
It's just, I, and I, this is no, it's, it's a fine bid, I'm sure, it's just, we're getting a lot less for more money, and it's hard to swallow. And that's, it's not your fault, it's just how it is. We've been locked in a long contract, and now we're having to deal with that, but it's. It's tough to build this one. It's not because anybody's, you know, I mean, it's a great bid, but it's, it's hard to talk through.
Um, I moved to accept the bid, um, green.
Green environmental.
Green environmental for a seven-year term.
Without?
With.
Well, I thought we.
With the option.
Yeah, with all the cart on the recycling.
Uh, with all the cart on the recycling.
And mandatory one month for the bolt, once a month.
Yeah.
Mandatory one month for the bolt.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll close name, motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate the patience.
Yeah. Worth the run.
The next agenda item is underneath business, Senate Bill one six three. I would recommend the council just go ahead and make the motion to table that. Easley didn't show up, and that was tied to their presentation.
Can I ask you that? Is that, um, is that just a letter of support?
I think they want a letter of support. They're trying to get the Senate to vote on a bill to allow them to go to a referendum to the voters to. Easley. Outside of that, I don't know much about it.
But it's not, they're not expecting any money from us.
No. But without hearing more from, cause I have hesitancy on this too, because I'm like, well, why are we supporting this? I have a lot, I, they're a great institution.
Yeah.
I doubt a lot of questions, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Taking motion to table this?
I'm just to table the letter of support for Easley.
So. Moving to the second, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll close name, motion passes. Uh, next item, conditional use for four, four, fifth, Russ.
Good evening. Uh, tonight we've got a conditional use permit for a short-term rental slash Airbnb. Uh, the property address is four oh four Fifth Street. This was heard by Planning Commission on October tenth. Um, it was passed at Planning Commission with a unanimous vote in favor. We had nobody from the public, um, that was objecting, um, or concerns. The city is recommending, um, approval as presented.
I thought it said in here that they, they said they did not approve it.
The wording there was confusing, or it said the, you're talking about the, uh, planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
The planning commission is recommending that the city council not, uh, to not approve.
Okay, we need to strike that, and I will fix that in the paperwork.
He said that.
Yeah, they did approve it with a unanimous. Yeah, I'm sorry. I will get that document corrected for that, so.
Any questions for us?
Is there anything else we need to know about this? I mean. I, I'm not familiar with this address, so I'm not sure what.
So, so it's, it's right on the corner of, um, is it Fifth and Elm Street?
No, it'd be Fifth and Fremont.
Fremont, is Fremont?
Dearborn.
Dearborn, okay, Fifth and Dearborn. Um, it actually has a separate, uh, entrance, um, to where their Airbnb part would be for their, for their house. And as well as a separate driveway. There's a driveway on Fifth Street, and then there's a driveway on Dearborn. So, um, there's plenty of parking. Um, it still has to, you know, even if this is approved, it still goes through, um, the city inspection process for, you know, smoke detectors, um, safety issues as well.
Anybody else like to speak this agenda item? State your name and address for us.
Kyle Carlson, four oh four Fifth Street. It's our Airbnb if you guys have any questions. Yeah, we can, we can answer it for you guys.
The goal is, is his, uh, mother owns Stonepoint Hall just outside of town. It's a wedding venue. Um, and the main goal is to allow the parents of like the brides or the bride and groom to come stay at our place, um, since he manages it anyway. So, and with the Airbnb process, we have the option to approve or deny stayers. Um, and we aren't accepting anyone under the age of twenty-one or anyone unaccompanied by an adult. So, it's not gonna be kind of like random people, it's gonna be a heavily vetted process that we're not just gonna let anyone come. Um, but as you said, it does have a private entrance and its own driveway as well, so.
We do live above it.
Yeah, we do live above, and we wouldn't be, we would always be above. We wouldn't go on like vacation and let people rent it out, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak this agenda item? Seen none, can't get discussion?
Are any particular. Criteria for this type of conditional use, or is this a blanket conditional use?
Conditional use for this service.
Smoke detectors, just a normal building inspection, or some of the things that they were articulating that they were gonna do themselves are not necessarily a part of a Airbnb conditional use? Do we, do we know, I mean, what are the conditional use pieces of Airbnb? You have to have your own driveway, I mean.
No, there's not, there's not necessarily a, an own driveway. I mean, you guys, you guys recently approved one that was actually just due south here.
The kitchen, yeah.
That was above the kitchen, and that won't even have its own driveway. It will have its own separate entrance because it's above the commercial kitchen.
So we're not requiring any extra?
No, we, we just require the minimum, um, you know, like smoke detectors, um, safety precautions, making sure, um.
To normal occupied residents?
Any, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if there were other tighter go around.
No, we don't, we don't have those. Yes, it does, through the, through the city inspector, so.
Initial, and that's it?
Usually initial, and that's, and that's it, is, is, is what we've done in the past.
Have some discussion? I'm all for these Airbnbs. I stay in them everywhere I go.
I'm saying.
Need them so bad.
Yes.
Read into was getting into making sure those are the owner's for people.
Well, now I think it's just a part of, you know, the pushback you get are, are around the neighborhood. There, you know, and, and so there'll be issues that they may have with the type of people that. You know, it's college kids coming in for a big ballgame weekend, can't stop that, it's not, you know, part of your, you know, your use rules, so. You know, with, with a lack of that, then tell that's a problem, then I'm okay. Um, it sounds like they've got plans to mitigate some of that anyways. But it's not, we couldn't force them to do what they just told us to do. They may change their mind, but you know what? And it just ran into whoever wants to run it. I just wanted to make sure we understood that, that it's wide open.
I'm, I'm good with my Airbnbs.
There's a couple in that area too, already. Yeah, as far as neighborhood concerns.
So, this is the first.
It's a conditional use permit.
So it is, yeah, it is an ordinance.
An ordinance granted.
I mean, isn't part of the conditional use to notify all the neighbors within X number of.
So, so part of the conditional use permit or, um, you know, zoning changes to notify the folks within, you know, two hundred feet of the property or a thousand feet if you're in the city. But yeah, it, in the, in the, these have always been ordinances that end up getting filed at the county. Now, let's say, um, the folks own it for three years, and they decide they're gonna sell and move to Florida, wherever. Um, at that point, the conditional use permit is no longer valid because it's only valid under, underneath their ownership. So, um, it would cease at that point.
Did anybody show up at the.
So, so, um, I sent out, I think thirty-five letters, um, when it was all said and done. For this one, I got no emails. I got, nobody showed up for, for planning commission to speak for or against it outside of the applicants. Um, and I've since still had no calls on it. They went around, um, I encouraged them to go around and talk with their neighbors before they would get the thing in the mail. That way, they can get out in front of it, answer a lot of the questions and concerns that most people will end up calling me and asking me, like, well, what is their plan here? What are they really doing? So, um, they did a good job of getting out of front of them, so.
So, I guess to Julie's point, you know, we've done single readings before. I guess maybe the question is to the applicants, is, is a two-week delay cause hardship for you?
No.
We can then go through our whole first, second reading. This can give. Residents a chance to hear it again.
As long as it doesn't bring any hardship for you guys.
If you had renters lined up for next week, it'd be, you know, it'd be a different story.
Yeah, no, we, we could wait two weeks for sure. All right, what in finance, what do you report, Scott?
We did not meet, have not met since the last council meeting. Thank you. Next meeting is this Friday, seven forty-five AM, Second floor of City Hall.
Well, safety, Susan, or I'm sorry, do you mean Delon Corey?
Uh, we haven't met either since the last, since the last council meeting. We had that one gap one.
Right.
A month, um, but our next one is, Hugh to Susan. It is the twenties, twentieth.
Twenty-seventh.
One, two, three, four, yeah, twenty-seventh. Four o'clock, Second floor City Hall.
We have not met, and our next meeting is scheduled for the fourteenth at four o'clock.
What about Scott?
Uh, we haven't met either, and our next meeting is this Thursday at nine o'clock.
He's playing, Scott.
We haven't met, um, I think we got notice from Ryan that we're up to three hundred on the survey. Somewhere around there. So I think part of what we were discussing, our next meeting is.
July fourth, Friday?
I think it's, um, remember, City Hall's closed.
It's Friday's closed?
That's interesting.
At two. We got a key? No, I think we're gonna, we could be at the right. So, Friday, two PM, Second floor City Hall.
So there's just one question I had on that, I emailed Scott about. I just had a couple of comments on the survey that. Some people were hesitant to put their ad, physical address in with the survey, so I know some people weren't filling out the survey because they're like, well, if I want to answer this honestly, I don't want. They didn't want to feel like they had repercussions or could give repercussions.
Is that the verification process?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's two things. It's that, and it's, you've got problems demographics in this part of the city, you want to know. So, you know, the northern parts got this issue, these issues, it helps. Basically, what they're saying is they don't trust the process, that this third party is not sharing that with the city.
And maybe we need it when we blast it next time.
I think we need to be just very clear, just over and over that.
Your address is not retained. Your address is not retained or seen by.
Yeah, we don't have access to that. It's, it's for the reason we just gave it, so. I don't disagree, I think that's natural, that's a decision. Is this really anonymous if they're asking you for my address?
How long does that get?
So I think what part of we'll discuss is whether we wanna continue it. Um, I don't think Ryan's gonna be there, but.
He won't be there.
So, I think there's, there's options for us to actually continue it for a period of time. And they can do, continually do some more outreach, social media, phone rolling, or sort of thing, so.
I think some more outreach with, with that caveat of, of making sure they give out the, the address and personal information and share with the city.
So we'll probably discuss that if that's what the council wants and we may ask Ryan and that group to extend the deadline and maybe recommunicate.
It's been, I think, a week and a half, maybe longer since I spoke with Ryan last and he gave me the number of almost three hundred. Um, so it's possible, because I did considerable more outreach after that, it's possible that we're well past the threshold that we set. They're gonna redact the outreach.
But if we can get more with putting out that information, I think we should try.
I'm just saying that if we're at four fifty-five hundred, we really want to extend the time.
Yeah, that's a good point. So are we gonna be able to have that information Friday? Can you share that for the meeting with you?
He's planning to send information.
Okay. So we can bring that back.
All, all I was saying is that just because we hit our threshold, if we can get above our threshold with giving people the security that the city doesn't get that information, I think it's good.
And if not for this one, it will help on the next one. And the more you message that.
This is done annually, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so obviously you don't wanna stretch it out too long, of course. Now you're almost getting to next year, but that's the only, that's the only, you, you don't, you don't change the validity of the results by stretching it out.
Maybe we change the date next year too.
Yeah.
We can move it a little further out, so it, well, I mean, if it takes us two months to finish it, we might take that first month before we start.
Sure.
Right now.
Yeah, there's nothing saying.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Nothing further, just if you've noticed the decorations, Christmas decorations are already going up today.
Yeah.
They're out there as we speak. It's early, but hey, great weather, be doing it.
Yeah, it's not bad. My wife went Christmas shopping today for decorations.
And lawn's been built and delivered regularly, so. Only comment I had, Glenn, that, um, we got the CDBG funding for businesses to apply that we applied for a couple of months ago. That was announced by the state today that Bubson was awarded a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
I do have to correct.
So we're, Ryan, you'll be going through the process, uh, probably in the finance community, you need to put that on your agenda, to start talking through how we want that application in. And I know Glenn's gonna have more information after he was with the grant.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with Brett over there at Government Assistance, he wrote the grant for us and he's got a lot of experience administering those, so.
Either way.
Yeah.
We're one of, I think only ten. I think I saw.
Oh, is that, I, I didn't hear the total number. That's, that's great then, um, so, yeah.
I can tell you.
And that's a hundred percent, there's no match on that.
Oh, wow.
No match on that.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Fourteen, but only six municipal bodies. Five, yeah, six municipal bodies, not it. All the rest were counties.
Same. Rest of the team are doing that, nice work, nice work.
Um, oh, can I take a motion to adjourn?
Wait.
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Um, did we get a contract from the rec?
No, CDC needs to start work for the community center?
Yeah.
No, we'll be working through that for the next few months.
Okay, well, we were talking about it last meeting, I was just curious on what came out.
No, the rec, the rec voted to move into the building. Um, so now that they voted to move into it, now CDC will have to work through, like we did with Sullivan Square, which will take two or three months.
Yeah, okay, well, I didn't know until, you went over the questions last one.
Yes, and after that meeting, um, they, I went to their meeting, just to add, if they had any follow-up questions. They didn't have many, um, and they voted, go ahead, means I took them.
I want to know that date.
Yep, that's, that's where it sits and that project is supposed to be completed around June or July.
It's probably a CDC agenda item for a while.
It's gonna be.
A rolling agenda.
So that's the other thing, it's gonna be on the agenda for budget finance on Friday, just tweaking the pro forma based on now on the.
Sure.
On the rec, doing their piece and seeing what that does to the financial.
Can we.
It'll be positive.
Can we get that and we get a head start on that so we can.
I've already got it.
You're right on.
I mean, you, you, you just basically.
Oh, yeah.
Just remove two lines.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, the staffing line and the revenue, you know, of events, I mean, they're getting to get the revenue, I think is what we're talking. Contract's not done yet, but if they get all the revenue, we put in a number that we forecasted for that, we just remove that and remove the cost of, of, uh, the headcount. We're still doing maintenance and utilities, I mean, all the rest of that stays. That's true. If you remove the, the revenue and the expense line in the back, it dramatically changes the proposals.
Yeah.
So just bring that back and show it to the council.
I was gonna say, can you get an update?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll be on CDC's agenda every single week, so if they come to a meeting.
We just asked.
If they say that they didn't have a meeting, you just ask the old question, you say, why? You have a agenda.
Now I'm scared. I'll put it down.
We can handle it. You're welcome.
Put that down in my notes.
Then it'll not fire us.
All right, anything else from the council? Not all, enter Dan, motion to adjourn. Moving to second, oh, wait, hang on. Happy anniversary.
Oh, thank you, where's my cake?
I, Amber, did you not get that, you know, pass it down?
Oh, wow.
We're preparing all first. Almost.
Put that in the.
That is awesome.